I would like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of February 16th, 2016. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. The first item on our agenda this evening will be a proclamation, and I will be making that presentation. Whereas the Future Farmers of America, FFA, and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resources systems; and whereas the FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas agricultural education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction of purpose to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education; and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore, I, Allo San Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the week of February 20th through February 26, 2016, as Future Farmers of America Week in the City of Santa Maria and encourage awareness of the organization and its opportunities for youth. In witness thereof, I have hereto signed my hand and caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed here to the 16th day of February, 2016. And this will be received by Jorge Gonzalez, the President of the Santa Maria Valley FFA.
On behalf of Santa Maria FFA and myself, I say thank you. Thank you for recognizing FFA Week, and thank you for your continued support towards our chapter. Without it, we wouldn't be one of the highest-ranking chapters in the state of California. Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, sitting in the back of the room, I'd like to have there all the FFA officers and members also that came tonight. Would you please stand? I did ask Jorge why he was the only guy in the bunch, and he said there was one more. But as you see, women are going to take over the world, so thank you.
He's just smart, that's all.
Now, it is my understanding that our Volunteer of the Month will be unable to join us after all this evening, so we will move on to commendation for retiring Block Grants Advisory Committee member Alicia Iglesias, and Councilmember Waterfield will be making that presentation.
It's an honor to be making this to you. Resolution number 2016-10, whereas on January 16th, 1996, the City Council approved the formation of the Block Grants Advisory Committee as a format standing committee, operating under the Brown Act, with each council member making individual appointments; and whereas the duties of the Block Grant Advisory Committee include assessing the community's needs, conducting public workshops and hearings, reviewing applications for funding, and making recommendations to the City Council for the allocation of housing and community development grant funds; and whereas Alicia Iglesias served with the highest degree of integrity as a delegate member of the Block Grants Advisory Committee for seven years, and during her tenure endured hundreds of hours of meetings, site visits, deliberations, presentations, and study sessions; and whereas her enthusiasm and passion to help the Santa Maria community has strengthened the committee, enriched the city's public participation process, and greatly benefited the Santa Maria and its residents. Now therefore, it is resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, as follows: Alicia Iglesias is hereby commended for her many years of dedicated service to the Santa Maria community, and wish the best in her future endeavors. Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, held the 16th day of February, 2016.
I'll second that motion.
Yes, we're going to vote on it first. Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt resolution 2016-10. There are further discussions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay.
I want to thank you all so much for this. It's been an honor to serve the City of Santa Maria.
Give it to Jack.
I was born here and never thought I'd leave.
Oh. Did you give it to Jack?
But I would like to say that everything that I've done for Santa Maria has been for the whole community, and I have been so honored. There's a lot of Santa Maria in the news lately, and there's a lot of people pointing fingers. And the one thing I would strongly suggest is to get involved. Get involved with your church, get involved with a community organization. Block Grant has some openings, and you can make a big difference. It's easy to sit back and point fingers and tell people what you think they should be doing, but it takes all of us. You can't expect five people or the police to be on every street corner. It takes all of us to make this a safe place, and it's our home. We should be paying attention. And I'd also like to say that I'm, believe it or not, going to really miss that binder this year. It has been an honor. When they go to deliberations this year, know that they've put in a lot of hours. They've struggled. They've weighed every option for every organization, and they come back with the very best recommendations that they can make. I would hate to see a repeat of last year. It is, you know, something that we didn't take lightly, and people should be very thankful, even if they're not funded, for what this committee has done for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Alicia, I would personally like to thank you because I called you and appointed you, and I remember, I said, "I really don't know this lady very well, but she was serving on something at the high school," and I talked to Jeff Hurn, and he goes, "Oh, she would be great." So, and I want to thank you personally for serving. Our next item is commendation for our retiring Community Programs Manager, and Councilmember O'Rourke will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this gives me a great lot of pleasure to make this presentation. City of Santa Maria, Santa Maria, California, Resolution Number 2016-09. Whereas Celeste Quelo Hudson began her public service to residents of Santa Maria in 1974, when she was 12-years-old, with the Recreation and Parks Department, and then made her way to the Community Development Department, where she served as planner for many years, and for the last couple of decades has worked in the Administrative Services Department as a Community Programs Manager for the Special Projects Division. And whereas, by the very nature of her job, she has devoted her professional life to serving the residents of the City of Santa Maria through the writings and administration of grants, and also her direct and extensive work with nonprofit agencies that serve our community. And whereas, her vast knowledge of the City of Santa Maria, CDPG, home and redevelopment have been an invaluable asset to the City of Santa Maria, and her insight, positive attitude, and her customer service are exceptional. And whereas Celeste will be retiring on February 29th, 2016, after more than 40 years of continued service with the City of Santa Maria, the Santa Maria City Council wishes to recognize her for her long-lasting contributions to the city and to its employees. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows: Celeste Quelo Hudson is hereby recognized and commended for her dedicated service and contributions to the City of Santa Maria, and we wish her, and her family, and Bailey, her husband, well in all their future endeavors. And I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor, to adopt Resolution Number 2016-09.
It's been moved in second by a couple of people to adopt Resolution 26-09. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Passed and adopted.
Passed, oh, sorry, passed.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, City Manager Rick Hayden, Director of Administrative Services Renee Visay, my boss, I want to thank you all for this recognition and for all your leadership and support over the years. It has been my honor and privilege to work as part of the City of Santa Maria family of hard-working employees. I'm sorry. I was trying to get through this without getting emotional. It has been an honor and a privilege to work as part of the City of Santa Maria family of hard-working, dedicated, and talented employees all these years. Our city employees are second to none and work with pride every day to make Santa Maria not just a better place, the best place to live, work, and play. A special thank you to our exceptional Special Projects staff, Rosie and Alicia, and it's been my pleasure to supervise and to mentor them. And last but not least, a special thank you to my family for their encouragement and And it's been a great, long ride, and I'm going to miss you all.
Mr. Boyson?
Thank you. Perhaps before Mr. Visay says his final words, I just want to mention, I've actually had the pleasure of working on both sides of the desk with Celeste, both from the City Council's side as well as from a nonprofit provider's side. I've also had the experience of dealing with other individuals in her position in other agencies, the City of Santa Barbara and County of Santa Barbara, to name a couple. And I can honestly say Celeste does the work of at least five of those individuals in other, and she does it without complaining, with the highest degree of integrity, and Celeste, I just really do appreciate the relationship we've had. I know you're not leaving us forever, so, you know, take 15 minutes' rest and come on back.
Mr. Visay?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to state that it has been truly a pleasure to have worked with Celeste over the past over six years. And frankly, I cannot think of anyone who has the best interests of the city in their heart more than Celeste. And I want to truly wish her a happy retirement and the best of wishes in everything else she does. Thank you.
And Celeste, I certainly would like to say thank you. I know so many times I've called you to ask you questions, and you have the information right there. You don't have to go look it up, and so I certainly appreciate everything you've done. And you do it with so much ease. You're just like, you're always relaxed, and I know when it comes crunch time, you can't be like that, but you are, and so I want to thank you very much for all you do for the city. Oh, Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah, I just, and Celeste, of course, you've got your soulmate Bailey there, who worked so many years and retired from the city and then was on the All-America City Committee also. You guys are a dynamite pair, and I know that Pantry on Park will go out of business if you stop going there at lunchtime.
Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council, just a couple of comments I'd like to make regarding Celeste. Celeste is an excellent example of a city employee. Spent her career with the city. She's worked for four operating departments. Started off with Recreation and Parks, then went Community Development, City Manager's Office for a while, and then Administrative Services. Mr. Boyson, I think hit it on the head when he says that she does the work of five individuals. She acknowledged her and her staff tonight. Our Special Projects Division has three employees in it. If you take a look at some of the other cities that do the same work, they have at least 10, 10 to a dozen employees. So, you know, she gives 110% in everything that she does. She truly cares for the community and for the city, as you saw this evening. And as far as professionalism, quintessential professional. She gives 110%, and she has a passion for what she does. And I would have to say that there's literally tens of thousands of residents in the City of Santa Maria, those most needy residents that have benefited from Celeste and her work. So thank you, Celeste, on behalf of the community and the city. Thank you for your years of service.
Our next item is a commendation for our retiring Public Works Inspector Herb Soares, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Soares, I know you're here. Where are you?
There is.
Tracy, oh, there you are, back there in the back hiding. I want to make sure. It's certainly my pleasure to, you know, read this resolution. Whereas Herbert A. Soares has been a valued and respected city employee since October 21st, 1974, and whereas with over 41 years of service in the Department of Public Works, Herb has acted in many capacities for the department to ensure the infrastructure is built and operated to improve the quality of life for the community of Santa Maria. And whereas Herb started his service for the city as an engineering aide and was involved in the design and construction of many public improvements; and whereas Herb served as a civil engineer technician, where he inspected public improvements and city public works projects; and whereas Herb worked as a water systems operator, where he maintained and improved the water systems for the city, and obtained the state certification in water distribution and treatment; and whereas Herb is currently a Public Works Inspector for the city, where he ensures that the public infrastructure is built to the standards of the city; and whereas, and whereas in each of his capacities, Herb has always been known for his willingness to help, reliability, and can-do attitude; and whereas Herb will retire from city service on February 20th, 2016, and the City Council wishes to recognize Herb for his lasting contribution to the community and to the City of Santa Maria. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows: Herbert A. Soares is hereby recognized and commended for his dedicated service and significant contributions to the Santa Maria community, and we wish him and his family well in their future endeavors. And I would move for the resolution, for the adoption of Resolution 2016-11?
Resolution 2016-11 has a motion as a made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Adopted? Adopted this day, February 16th, 2016.
Well, it's been a privilege and honor just to be able to work for the City of Santa Maria. I really have to tell everybody that I really appreciate the opportunity that I've had the last 42 years to work here. I've enjoyed every minute. I enjoy getting up in the morning, going to work, putting my orange shirt on, and that's one thing I'm going to miss. I'm maybe going to keep some of the orange shirts so I can still, still wear them. But no, I'm a third-generation San Marian, born and raised here, and really have enjoyed the opportunity to work here and look forward to working some more also. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Khan, can you make sure he gets an orange shirt?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor and councilmembers, if I could just say a couple of words. As has been expressed here tonight, Herb has been a great part of the city family for many years. His work has improved the quality of life for the community. Herb has vast construction knowledge and experience to assist the contractor, and Herb has the unique ability to convey that information to the contractor and work really well with the construction community to make sure that improvements are built to our standards and of a high quality. So he's really a truly good city team member. We've appreciated all the work he's done for us, and we look forward to working with them in the future. So thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
And he will get an orange shirt.
Thanks, thanks. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the Council, I wanted to also say a few words regarding Herb, another fine example of the quality of employees that we have, spending over four decades of their life working for the city, the community, the residents, the businesses. I've known Herb for a number of years. I actually had the opportunity to sit across the table from Herb on the negotiating, when we negotiated with SCIU. And while I would say that we did not always agree eye to eye on a lot of the issues, he was the true gentleman and professional, and at the end of the day, we always shook hands, and he represented his brothers and sisters in SCIU Union as well as his department excellent. And I would have to say that the residents, just like Ms. Quelo Hudson, were well-served by Mr. Soares and Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the Volunteer of the Month for the Police Department was unable to be here tonight, and Mr. Boyson, could you read the information on Gwen Kendall?
We'd like to recognize Gwen, excuse me, Gwen Kendall as Police Department's Volunteer of the Month. Santa Maria Police Department would like to recognize Gwen Kendall as Volunteer of the Month for February. Gwen has been a volunteer, volunteer with the Police Department for the last four years and has volunteered. I don't know if I can get through this.
Let me try it again. Santa Maria Police Department would like to recognize Gwen Kendall as Volunteer of the Month for February. Gwen has been a volunteer with the Police Department for the last four years and has volunteered over 300 hours of her time. Gwen has provided assistance to the Records Bureau, Detective Bureau, and Traffic Bureau with various duties. After the move to the new station, Gwen started to assist weekly in the Training Bureau and has become an incredible asset to the unit. Gwen has taken a proactive role in filing projects and organization. She is willing to do whatever is needed of her and is constantly asking what else she can do. Her attitude is upbeat, witty, and she is an absolute pleasure to work with. Gwen has made an incredible impact on the Training Bureau, and her time has proven to be invaluable. She is dedicated, on time, and always willing to do more. For this, we would like to honor her with the Volunteer of the Month Award, and we'll be delivering that to her.
Thank you. And it'll be delivered to her. Thank you so much, Mr. Boyson. The next item on our agenda this evening will be the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed-session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not printed on the agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have speakers this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have four.
Four, okay, thank you. And they'll be given three minutes apiece, and no other requests will be taken at this time. And Patricio Solario, followed by Mark Mueller, followed by Tony Coles, followed by Ann Camarosa. Good evening, Mrs. Solario.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I am thrilled to be here. First, I just, I want to congratulate Celeste. I've worked with her, and she's always been very courteous. Her entire staff has been always very helpful. And in addition, I'm part of the Santa Barbara, the Fund for Santa Barbara's Grant-Making Committee for the last cycle, have a new understanding for what you all do on the CDPG Committee, so thank you for that. So I'm really happy to be here tonight together with Felix Esparasa. We're on a committee that has decided to recognize some folks in the community, and I'm, we're going to point some fingers in a really great way and recognize folks for their contribution to leadership in our community. And it's called the Santa Maria Valley Latino Legacy Awards. This is our first annual. We're hoping to make this an annual event. I'm here to invite you all to join us, and together as a committee, we identified some sectors that we'd want to recognize, including the Lifetime Achievement Award, where we'll be recognizing Raoul and Dominga Ceja, and Dominga's here tonight. And also in athletics, Lalo or Eduardo Kuna, and he works at Hardy Diagnostics, but he's a coach in, for a local club team, and he's also Santa Maria High School varsity soccer coach. They're in first place right now. A parent, Francisco Lozano, from Santa Maria High School. Public safety, your very own Sergeant Jesús Valle, from Santa Maria Police Department. A youth, Miguel Sales, from Santa Maria High School. Business, Jose Witrón, from Hub 81. In the healthcare field, we'll be recognizing Hendrick Gonzalez, from Santa Barbara Family Dentistry. And in addition, we'll be recognizing for nonprofit organizational staff, Cristina Gonzalez, from the Fund for Santa Barbara, who is also here tonight. And community advocate, Jose Nichols, who's been involved and retired from CAC and from the Guadalupe School District, Union School District. And in education, Noemi Ornales, from Allen Hancock College. So we hope that you can join us on March 20th at the Radisson, and it's an all-you-can-eat-and-drink brunch from 11 to 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and we're hoping to have a good time and really recognize folks who are doing some great things in our community.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That sounds wonderful. Mrs. Solario, I'm sorry you felt rushed to go through that. I would have given you extra time, but you did good in three minutes. Thank you. You did. Mark Mueller, followed by Tony Coles.
Good evening, Mayor Patino. Good evening, City Council. I'm here to talk about student success this evening. My name is Mark Mueller. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Santa Maria Benita School District. Part of what is crucial to having student success are involved parents and hard-working kids. Before I get started, I need to commend Ms. Alicia Iglesias, because her children went El Camino when I was principal there, very involved parents, and we appreciate that. And also, I'm sitting back here next to Amber Davis, and no one has ever worked harder than Amber, and she went through our schools, got her college degree at Weber State. So great work, both of you. I wish to invite all City Councils, City of Santa Maria, to come to our LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan, meeting. We have an open hearing at the school district the second Wednesday of every month. And at this meeting, we're going to be discussing how we are going to allocate funds for the upcoming school year. Now, we receive local funding that we can choose how we spend. So how have we been spending this money so far? We received 28 million. So far, we're going to be receiving an additional 7, which will put us at 35. So a lot of that money has been used in collaboration. So we have collaborated with the city. We have additional after-school programs, what's called ACE's program. We have additional slots. More kids can go, and we hire a number of people from the City of Santa Maria to work, at Rexon Park, who work with our children after school. We also collaborate with the Police Department. We also collaborate with the Police Department. And we hire a school resource officer who helps us keep our kids safe. We collaborate with youth and family. All of our schools have counselors from youth and family on their sites, outreach consultants they're called. We hire Healthy Start advocates. All of our children and parents and families who need basic needs, we have advocates there who link them up to services, food, shelter, clothing. We have expanded our Saturday school program. We have 1,500 students who go to school on Saturday. We have 3,000 students who go to school in the summer right now. We work closely with Fighting Back for truancy mentors to keep our children in school. We have many parent meetings. Even tonight, as soon as I leave this meeting, I'm going over to Vets Hall, where we have a parent meeting going on in collaboration with the PD and in collaboration with the Food Bank, where we are working on safety and healthy food. Tomorrow evening, we'll have a meeting on social media, how to keep kids safe on social media, and also how to get them on the A to G path, which is a path to get kids to college. And that's a collaboration we have with UCSB. So, that'll be at Jimenez School tomorrow evening. We have many other parenting classes that we offer right now. We have Parent Project. We have what is called PK. That is how to advocate for your child in school. We have nurturing parenting classes that the school district puts on with this funding. We collaborate with Hancock. All of our schools...
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay. All of our schools have tutors from Hancock College, college students that come into our schools and serve as role models for our kids and also help them with their schooling. So, we have many other activities which help our students. Are we seeing some results? Yes, we are currently. And for about the last five years now, our kids come to school at a higher ratio than any other children in Santa Barbara County. So, you can go to any school district and no one has the attendance of our kids. 97% on any day is the average. Do the kids feel engaged in school? Yes, they do. I know there's safety concerns in the community that we all share. But when we survey our children, which we did last year, they felt safe and engaged in our schools in a comparative rate at the 99th percentile to all children in the state of California at the junior high level. At the fifth grade level, they felt very safe and engaged also, but there's not a comparative scale. So, what I'm saying is our kids feel safer and more engaged than any other children at any other comparable school in the state of California. We invite you all to come and share your thoughts and feelings and opinions on how we can spend this next set of money to help our kids be successful and to help our community grow. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the great information.[773.32][773.32](APPLAUSE). Tony Coles, followed by Ann Kremarosa.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. It's nice to see you all. I'm really here this evening to ask for some additional public comment on what's been going on in our city related to crime. We know that there's, it's a difficult issue and there's a lot of aspects to this issue related to our open space, our challenges for open space and youth and what they have to do. And when that's not available, it drives them elsewhere. I know there's been lots of questions about the Police Department having moved from that downtown area to Blosser, and has that had any effect on our city and crime? And then there's always the economic development issue. And when there's not a lot of economic opportunity, there's not a lot of light and vision at the end of that tunnel for people, and things sometimes can feel desperate. And I think that's where your leadership is critical. And I'd like to ask for you individuals and staff to be able to publicly address some of these issues. I know you guys have a plan. I know that there's things that you're working on, and I'd like you to be able to share that with us to ease some of the fears. Really, that's all I wanted to share this evening. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coles, on Thursday night at the Grace Baptist Church, the One Community Action will be meeting there from 6:30 to 8:30. So, you may be interested in coming.
I will.
Thank you very much. And Ann Kremarosa? Good evening.
He's tall. Mayor Patino, City Council people, Mr. Hayden and the rest of the staff, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ann Kremarosa, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Make It Your Business Projects, the MYB Projects, of which there seem to be many. And I also would like to congratulate Celeste. I haven't known her very long, but the little bit of time that I got to know her, I can, I will agree that she is an exceedingly helpful lady and exceedingly bright in what she does. And so, thank you for the help that you gave me. I appreciate it very much. Make It Your Business, Inc., the business was formed in 2013, December of 2013. And we actually opened our co-working space in about mid-April of 2014. And we're the only co-working space between, oh, I don't know how far north because there's nothing in San Luis, but from here to Santa Barbara. And so, in a co-working, shared workspace, we provide entrepreneurs a place where they can actually come and operate their business without having to invest a lot of money in having their own private office space. So, they're not having to rent all the square footage that comes with a private office. They're not having to rent the restrooms and the hallway and all that. And so, we provide all the business support pieces that they need, the receptionist, the Wi-Fi, the technology that's necessary. And as, in an attempt to try and make it as full a service resource as possible, mainly because we haven't had an SBDC locally, we haven't had our own SCORE chapter for many years, we haven't had our own Women's Business Center locally. We brought in, I brought in SCORE chapter out of San Luis Obispo, and they've been working, worked with the Santa Maria Chamber, and we got SCORE San Luis Obispo to come down and provide consultation services locally. So, I host them at MYB. We also worked with Women's Economic Ventures out of Santa Barbara to get them to come up to Santa Maria, and we hosted them at MYB so that we're providing their resources to our community as well. They've been offering their classes in Spanish, but they haven't been having a representative locally, and we wanted to make sure that they were available. Another nonprofit that we've brought into town is Spokes for Nonprofits out of San Luis Obispo. And they come down and work with our area nonprofits, providing them with access to a lot of resources that they don't necessarily have. So, that's a good resource and additional resource that's available. And so, you know, working to put together a really, a full-service center that supports business and entrepreneurship locally, and I consider nonprofits and for-profits altogether. And so, our membership really reflects the community. I'm guessing that we're probably about 75% Hispanic and maybe 25%, 20%-ish African-American. And for a long time, I joked that I was the only Latina in the building. I mean, the only, the only non-Latina in the building. I was the only white girl in the building, and it was really kind of funny. But my Spanish is getting so much better. And, but, so, in February 2015, we started the conversion process to convert from a Subchapter S corporation into a nonprofit. And we've completed that process, and we're now a 501(c)(3) because that space was never about Kremarosa. It's really about building a service for the community, and that's been the goal. And so, as we've worked forward now with the beginning of 2016, I'm really excited about what's coming because now we're going beyond just MYB spaces. We are now launching into the MYB Santa Maria Business Development Center. So, we're taking it beyond what we've been. And if we don't get our own SBDC, we're going to create our own. And we're providing those resources. We're getting ready to move into a bigger facility, twice as much space, which is really exciting. escrow closes on Friday. And, and so, you know, we'll be having, we'll be providing professional development training, technical assistance to businesses, small businesses, startups, and those who want to grow, networking and seminars. We've got plans for incubators, for general business incubator, as well as a culinary incubator, to help grow the cottage food industry, which is a way that people can become self-sufficient by using their own home kitchen. And they can make food products and turn around and sell them. And we're going to provide training for them so that they can be successful. And as was indicated by Mr. Coles, you know, entrepreneurship and being in business is a path to self-sufficiency. And I believe that our community members have that right. And so, that's the goal, is to work towards that right for everybody to be self-sufficient. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, did you have any comments?
Just a couple, Mayor. At the last city council meeting back on February 2nd, the city council did discuss through a presentation of the police chief, the recent acts of violence that have been occurring in the city. So, I would encourage anybody to go back on the internet, on the city's website, check out the video for the council meeting and our public comment section, and you'll see a disclosure of what the Police Department was able to talk about, and it gave council an avenue to voice their concern also. We did have a meeting on February 11th at St. John Newman's, dealing with the recent acts of violence that have happened in the city. It was a public forum that we had police officers at, and it was a question-and-answer forum that we had also our gang suppression unit out there to discuss any concerns that the public had. And you are right, Madam Mayor, this coming Thursday evening from 6:30 to 8:30, there will also be another meeting, One Community Action. And I will be presenting Ms. Waterfield some information that she can announce tomorrow when she's on the Ben Hay Show, 14:40 in the morning at 8 o'clock. And one last thing, I'd like to turn it over, if I could, to our Utilities Director, Mr. Springer. He has the recent update as to where the city is from a water conservation effort.
Thank you, Mr. Springer.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. As you can see, a couple of things on the super complicated chart. One, the good news is the monthly savings achieved, the black line, is still above the cumulative savings required, the yellow line. So, the good news is that the community is still continuing to meet its conservation requirement imposed by the state. What you may also notice from this chart that's different from previously is that this chart used to end in February. The governor, via an executive order late last fall, directed the State Water Resources Control Board to look at extending the conservation requirements through October of this year. What we're being informed by staff is that they have adopted those rules, and they're just working their way through the system. We fully anticipate that those conservation requirements will be imposed by the state through October of this year. So, the chart continues out through October. In the next slide, it's greatly simplified. You can see the water drop. Or, ta-da! There it is! Whee! So, we had to recalibrate the water drop. So, we're about halfway through. The good news is for the month, like I said, our total accumulation, you can see, we're above the line for January of 2016. We've, in fact, almost saved enough for our conservation requirement through February, although our conservation for January was only 14%. Pretty difficult for us to conserve much more than that, given that in January of 2013, we had rain events. Interestingly, particularly in the last, you know, week or so, it has been very unseasonably warm. And in fact, on the water production side, we had a day or two where we were in the 12 million gallons a day range, which is what we see in the middle of summer. So, obviously, with the warm weather and spring coming on, people are starting to water. So, we're still encouraging that conservation. And the good news is, as we start our way through to October with the new conservation requirements, at least we have a little bit of a head start because we did so well throughout last summer. And just on this last slide that Steve's going to put right up. Perfect. I just want to point out that the reason we're looking at continuing that conservation and the state's requiring that is that as of February 12th, which we haven't gotten any rain since then, we were at 5.27 inches for this rain year, which is 2/3 of a normal year. Not 2/3 of a wet year or an El Nino year, just 2/3 of regular. So, we're actually on the dry side. Cachuma, which is a source of water supply for the South Coast, is at 14.9% of capacity, which is actually lower than it was a month ago, and we're in the rainy season. So, not looking too great. Twitchell has plenty of room for rain, so bring it on.
Okay, so what happened to El Nino?[1502.12][1502.12](LAUGHTER). I know it's not your fault, any more than it's mine.
I, thank you.
Because people are asking me, and I go, because I kept saying, you know, be ready, be prepared.
The interesting news from the local weather forecasters that they're still calling for rainier than usual. They just keep pushing it further and further out. It was supposed to be here in February and March. Now, maybe it'll just be March.
Maybe it'll rain all summer.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Hayden? Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Do any council members have items they wish to pull for discussion?
I do.
Okay.
Not discussion, but just abstain.
Abstain.
Which would be item C.
C, okay. Okay. Mr. Boyson?
Madam Mayor, move for the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item C.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar, except item C. Having heard the motion, is any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Ora?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Then, Madam Mayor, move for the approval of item, agenda item number C.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, and a second to approve, agenda item C. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Ora?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I abstained. Sorry. I abstained.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. The next order of business is a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider the quarterly financial report for the second quarter of 2015, 2016, and a budget amendment report to approve operational changes to the 2015-16 budget.
And the staff report is to be made by Administrative Services Director, Mr. Vizet.
Thank you, all the mayor, councilmember staff, and the public. I'll briefly review, present the quarterly financial report for the second quarter ended December 31st of 2015. Once again, I'll be primarily reviewing the general enterprise funds. The beginning fund balance in the general fund of $10,122,000 is the audited balance as of July 1st of 2015. Concerning city revenues, through the second quarter of the fiscal year, sales tax receipts are only $67,000 greater than the last fiscal year by 1 and 1/2%. Gains in auto sales and lumber building materials are the category showing the majority of increased activity. Automobile demand remains a mainstay for manufacturing. However, over the past two quarters, sales tax has been leveling off and not increasing as dramatically as it has been over the last few years. Sales tax is only 1.2% greater than last year through December. NHIS revenue is at 44% of budget at $783,000, with an annual budget of $1.8 million. This compares to receipts through the second quarter of last year of $1,931. It appears that the effects of El Nino and declining oil prices are resulting in declining NHIS revenue. At this point through the fiscal year, we believe we'll receive approximately $1.2 million rather than the $1.8 we budgeted. And this compares to the $3.2 million we got last fiscal year in total of NHIS revenue. So, at this point, it's on the decline for the fiscal year. Permit revenue is at $1.32 million, or 57% of budget versus $1.1 million last fiscal year at this time. Excuse me. Expenditures include the annual fire debt service payment of $653,000, the Solid Waste Collection Fund for the payoff of the CalPERS site fund we did about three years ago, and there are about seven annual payments left remaining on this loan. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the second quarter are slightly overbudgeted at 51.2% or $2,138,000, and expenditures are on budget at 49 and 1/2%. And they include the $106,000 payment in the admin fund for the annual levy loan payment. Through December, we're up to the 89% of expenditures with public safety related, with 43% spent on fire and 46%... on fire and 46% spent on police operations. So, the majority of Measure U funds so far have been spent on public safety. And these percentages will increase as the fiscal year continues on. As for the enterprise funds, the water and wastewater fund revenue has exceeded expenditures by $836,000, and expenditures included the semi-annual debt service payment of $3.8 million. And in this third quarter, we'll be making the next payment of interest only of $777,000. For the solid waste fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by $249,000. And this concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Vizet? Mr. Boyson?
Well, I have a question on the budget amendments, but not on the financial.
Okay.
Reported.
Okay. Were you going to go through the budget adjustments?
Normally, I don't, but if you ask specific questions on them, I'd be...
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Boyson.
The only thing, I'd, I've actually received a couple of inquiries regarding the $90,000 that we are budgeting or were asking for approval tonight for cameras to be purchased by the police department. And I wanted, perhaps you could just go through the process on this and to make sure that we're not taking $90,000 out of the police budget on a permanent basis.
It's, yes, we'll be going through a formal budgeting process of $75,000 and over. So, it's an equipment purchase. So, we're going through a formal bid process, requiring at least three bids. And the approval of those bids, once they're selected, we go through the council, at a council meeting, council approval.
Madam Mayor Patino, Mr. Boyson, if I could elaborate a little bit more, too. I think Mr. Boyson's question was more regarding the vacancies that we have and the use of the funding. At any one time, at any city department, we do have vacancies. In the police department right now, we have a number of vacancies. We have a dispatcher, we have dispatch supervisor, we have a commander, we have a lieutenant, and we have a couple of police officer vacancies as well, too. The salary savings that we have from those vacancies, we would allocate to one-time funding of nine surveillance cameras. Does that mean that we have less officers on the street? No. That means that we have some salary savings until we can get those positions filled. And we feel that the best use of that, use of that funding would be on a one-time basis, and that would be for the surveillance cameras. All of our shifts, patrol shifts, swing shifts, graveyard shifts are fully staffed. So, we do not reduce the deployment of any of our officers in the field from that perspective. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. I'd bring it back to the, for any further discussion, is there a motion?
I'd move for the approval of Resolution Number 2016-14.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion to accept Resolution 2016-14 with a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item will be a report of our city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Patino. Members of the city council, your next city council agenda would be on March the 1st. We have a couple proclamations. One is for the Boys and Girls Club, and another one is for Arbor Week. We have a couple consent agenda items. We do have some appointments to be made to the Blockground Advisory Committee, the planning, excuse me, the Recreation and Parks Commission. And then, we are going to have one public hearing, and it's for the long-awaited Inos Rancho's general plan amendment. And then, also, that will be the first reading. And then, we will also be having a regular business item, which will be an appeal of the Recreation and Parks mitigation fees from the Tobes Group for Sienna at Westgate. So, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. So, now, we'll do the oral reports of council members. Ms. Zuniga?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I've, I attended, of course, the 50th, I think it was the 50th Annual Employee Recognition Dinner. It was just, it was a great time, and it was an awesome opportunity to acknowledge our employees and the service, and of course, the several retirees. It was really heartening. I know several of the people who spoke shared about how they started out in the city as teens and part-time workers and worked their way through the ranks and through several departments. So, that was all good to hear, and the food was awesome. And then, I attended New Hope Missionary Baptist Church Scholarship Luncheon. Madam Mayor Patino and I met with Pastor Wesson a few weeks ago, and he shared his commitment to assuring that young people receive the support and encouragement to be successful in their pursuit of their educations. And this scholarship luncheon was a way to do that. Seven young men and women were awarded scholarships to help purchase books for their school. And then, I attended the Recreation and Parks VIP Special Olympics Dinner fundraiser. It was actually my first time as a guest. I've worked it for several years as a volunteer. And again, the food was great. And Savannah, who's one of the Olympians and helps with MC duties, is always such a good time. She's so excited.
Isn't she wonderful?
I know. She's so excited and gets the crowd all...
If people don't know Savannah, then they don't know Special Olympics, right?
Exactly. She's a great spokesperson. And I'll be back on the volunteer line next year. And then, I had the opportunity to read to preschoolers at the Maria de los Adobes Preschool Center there. They provided the book, The Sleeping Dog, which I read three or four, five, 10 times to my husband because I wanted to make sure that my inflection was correct. I didn't want to disappoint the kids. And I was able to, before I left, I gave them each a book and also was able to give them some literature from our public library, hoping to encourage their patronage of the library. They were so excited to get the book. I mean, I don't know, at four years old, I'd have been excited to get a book, but they were excited to get the book. So, it was a great time. I really enjoyed it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Boyson? Well, I, well, I'm keeping you on your toes, okay?
I like it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I do apologize for missing the employee awards dinner. I promise it can't be helped. I won't do it again. I would like to thank the entire city council for their efforts in soliciting support of the Board of Supervisors for our acquisition of the suspended Table A water for Central Coast Water Authority, and especially thanking Councilmember O'Rourke and Madam Patino for addressing the Board of Supervisors last Tuesday. We were not 100% successful. We didn't get a yes, but we didn't get a no. So, we're still working on that. And hopefully, going forward, we'll, we'll be able to negotiate a fair settlement for that. I'd also like to announce late this afternoon, in spite of what Mr. Springer is saying, they are predicting rain for tomorrow. And so, we are opening up the Freedom Warming Centers at 6:00 PM tomorrow night. They'll be open until 6:00 AM on Friday morning. So, they'll be open for a total of 36 hours. And these, this is at the Armory at 937 South Thornburg. It is, anyone is allowed in. We do not drug test. We do not do background checks and that sort of thing. All that we ask is that you behave, and we provide them with some warm socks and a warm place to stay for during the rainy period. And I think this truly is the start of El Nino, from what I understand, Mr. Springer. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke?
Yes, I, thank you. I attended along with several other council members, the joint Chamber of Commerce meetings at Vandenberg Air Force Base. Lompoc and, and the Santa Maria Chamber host the base, and we get an overview of what's going on. And a couple of you have seen or heard what's been going on, and they've got, they're going to have a lot of, a lot more launches. That was rather nice. And I had a lab school meeting last week. We talked about our usual Isla Vista Community Services District opportunity, and then ratified Lompoc's annexation of some property. Also, I had a meeting with the Inos Rancho's developers. Did have a chance to talk to the Board of Supervisors. And I'll just say, it's not Santa Maria alone. Just to highlight that, we had folks from Solvang speaking, and a dynamite presentation by the Guadalupe City Council person. And then, of course, the mayor did a stellar job, as well as Councilman Boyson. So, this is a critical issue, I think, in the future of Santa Maria, and we really need to obtain the opportunity to purchase that water. And then, the, the service awards for the city folks, just dynamite. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready, Ms. Waterfield?
Finished my homework. Okay.
I was allowing Ms. Waterfield to make her list while we were, while everyone was talking.
On February 3rd, I attended the State of Vandenberg, which both Chambers of Commerce, the City of Santa Maria and the City of Lompoc came together to hear the Colonel speak in regards to the condition of Vandenberg, which is very good and very promising. On the 2nd of Feb, or the 4th of February, I attended a properties owner meeting, and these were property owners that have little malls here in Santa Maria. They have the, the street malls and business owners that are concerned with what's been going around their property and things that have been happening. So, we met with them. On the 2nd of February, I spoke at Leadership Santa Maria. I was one of three speakers. Anne was there with me, and another gentleman from the oil division. And it was a really nice leadership meeting that we had. On the 8th of February, I was back out at Vandenberg Air Force Base and met with Lieutenant Colonel Vivian's of the 30th FSS Wing, and had a great conversation with her. And she is bringing me more into the loop of getting more involved with Vandenberg Air Force Base. Along with everybody here, I attended the Employees Awards Luncheon, and that was a very exciting dinner. I, from what I understand, it was the largest attendance that we've, we've had in the city of Santa Maria. So, that was a really nice, well-attended dinner. And on the 12th of February, I read to the Los Adobes Head Start School. And these children are so precious. They dressed up so wonderful. The little boys were in little vests and ties and dress pants, and it was just a sight to be seen. They were just very wonderful children, very polite. They were just excited about having a visitor come in. And we carried on really good conversations. And so, I'm looking forward to going back, and I'll try my hand in Spanish. They were, they got all excited with that. So, it was, it was nice, and it was an honor to be asked to, to be there. So, I believe that's all I had.
Thank you. February 3rd, I met with Van Scoye Associates, Greg Burns, who is our lobbyist in DC, and ran through the different things that we can hopefully get out of the federal government for Santa Maria. Attended the State of the Vandenberg Air Force Base Luncheon with the Lompoc and the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce. February 4th, I met with the property owners, meeting with the Santa Maria Police Department at the police station. And so, that the police officers were able to tell business owners and property owners what they need to do, how they could, how they could maybe light up their property or fix certain things, or, and, and call whoever they needed to call if they had questions so that the police would let them know that they are very available and accessible. On February 5th, I attended the Econ Alliance Growing Possibilities, which was a regional ag forum held at the Fair Park. February 6th, I had the honor of being called for, I mean, February 8th, the honor of being called for jury duty. And so, by mid-afternoon, they, excuse me. February 9th, I attended the Board of Supervisors Meeting to speak on the water issue, suspended Table A. We tried to reassure them that Santa Maria would pay its bills, and we could take care of that. And it's almost like they wanted our firstborn before they let us out of the room. So, I, I don't understand the reticence in not just signing that because not just Santa Maria, Solvang, and Guadalupe, and San Jose wants that water. It's water that should stay in Santa Barbara County and not leave Santa Barbara County.
And now, we understand there actually may be some interest from the city of Carpinteria. So, in the South County regions.
Let's see. Then, I met with some of the developers for the Inos Rancho's development. February 11th, I met with Pete Flores, who will be spearheading our One Community Action, which is this Thursday night from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Grace Baptist Church.
8:30?
Did I say 8:30?
No, you said 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry. 6:30 to 8:30 at the, at the Grace Baptist Church on the corner of Bradley and East McCoy.
The roundabout.
Okay. I attended the Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Coalition Meeting. I met with a young man from PCPA, was doing an interview on me, and they did an interview with several people in, in Santa Maria, and wanted to know what I thought about free speech. Then, I also read to the preschoolers at Los Adobes, the Maria Head Start, and they were so nice and so well-behaved and very attentive that evening. And attended the Employee Awards Dinner, which, as I said, as, as Waterfield said, was the, probably the largest that we've ever had. And I think practically everyone was there that received, received a watch. And then, this morning, I did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and that is it. Any other comments from council? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this concludes tonight's meeting.